Good morning, everyone. Thank you for your patience. I'm Lisa Bender. I'm the president of the city council. And before we start our regularly scheduled agenda, we have a special resolution today, which is declaring 2020 Multiple Sclerosis Awareness Week. And I will turn this over to council vice president Jenkins and council member Schrader to make the presentation.
Good morning. Thank you, council president, as well as council member Ellison, who is joining us too. You know, as a member of the MS community, I am really proud to be able to share this resolution in support of Multiple Sclerosis Awareness Week, to bring attention to a community of individuals that are dealing with this autoimmune disease, as well as other autoimmune diseases. It's really important in this day, when we have these infectious viruses that are spreading around the country and around the world, that we understand some of these vulnerable populations that may be even more compromised in the event of this pandemic. And so, I'm really proud to stand with my colleagues to recognize the 2020 Multiple Sclerosis Awareness Week. And whereas multiple sclerosis, MS, is a neurological disease of the central nervous system, affecting nearly 1 million people in the United States alone, and whereas multiple sclerosis generally strikes people in the prime of their life between the ages of 20 through 50, and the cause and course of the often debilitating symptoms of MS remain unknown and no cure currently exists, and?
Since 1946, the Multiple Sclerosis Society has been a driving force for MS research, relentlessly pursuing treat prevention, treatments, and a cure, and has invested more than $1 billion in groundbreaking research. And funds raised through the National Multiple Sclerosis Society has fueled $38.7 million investing in 123 new research projects at the best medical centers, universities, and other institutions throughout the United States and abroad, leading to many breakthroughs in the treatment of MS, and?
Whereas stopping MS in its tracks, restoring what has been lost, and ending MS forever is the mission of the National Multiple Sclerosis Society, and one that all Americans and Minnesotans should support. And whereas the city of Minneapolis recognizes the importance of finding the cause and cure of MS, and expresses its appreciation for the dedication that the National Multiple Sclerosis Society Upper Midwest has shown towards creating a world free of MS.
So now, therefore, be it resolved that the mayor and the city council do hereby affirm March 8th through the 14th, 2020, as Multiple Sclerosis, MS Awareness Week, and do commend this observance to all of our residents. We encourage all residents of Minneapolis to learn more about multiple sclerosis and what they can do to support individuals with MS and their families. Thank you. And we have a word from council member Schrader.
No, thank you, council vice president. This is a very important issue for me with multiple members of my immediate family have that. And I think, I don't think people realize how new this, like, information about this disease is, and how that affects just how, not just the people that have it, but the families and the caregivers and the community. And just, I don't want to miss this opportunity to thank the MS society, because it is something, just my own personal story, my, some of the recent breakthroughs we've been able to see. We just had, my mom's been able to walk much, so much better. And to see how my dad, who's been her primary caregiver for decades now, to be able to see them look in each other's eyes and say, well, we might be able to dance again. They haven't gotten there. I'm still, still funding your research and hopefully get there. But it is just something I don't think people can see until they actually are that close. So just thank you for your work.
Yeah, basically similar story. When I was around 15, my mom was diagnosed with MS, and I've seen her go through those ebb and flows. You know, anybody who knows her knows that she was, she was a tremendous athlete and a triathlon performer. And she's gone through those ebb and flows of like, does this, you know, what is my ability? What can I still do? And to see her sort of, kind of lean into being able to work, she's, she's spent some time on the planning commission, she's still on the school board, and just kind of seeing her, and learning a lot about what it means to support someone who has limited mobility. I think it's something that is, you can easily overlook if it's never been an issue for you to step onto a curb. I took her to Cuba about two years ago, and, and it was, it was a tremendous experience to travel with my mom, but also, very, you realize just how difficult it is to get around when there aren't like ramps onto the street and onto the sidewalk and all of that kind of stuff. And so, so yeah, so just thank you for all your work, and also just wanted to kind of come up here and recognize with my colleagues and recognize my mom, who's been, you know, fighting this for a long time.
Well, you know, the first time that I presented this resolution, I was using a cane myself. And, and thanks to research, thanks to awareness, thanks to some breakthroughs, I am now cane three for the most part. Haven't quite gotten back to my athlete days yet, but we're working towards that. And so, I do want to thank the MS society and all the efforts that you guys do here locally, as well as nationally and around the world. And so, it is a great honor to be able to recognize the work that you do and to lift up awareness around this issue. Thank you so much. And please, if you want to share any words, we'll give you that opportunity. All right. Well, thank you so much for being here, and thank you for continuing to champion this issue.
I'll just add really quickly, I can see the emotion as my colleagues speak. And I just want to thank each of you for sharing your personal journey and stories, because I think it is really empowering for people who are impacted by anything, by medical condition, to break through stigma, to get connected to resources like the MS society. So I know it's not always easy to put our personal lives and selves out there, and each of you have done that bravely, and just want to commend you and lift up that power that I think we all see when, when we do that. So thank you, each of you, council vice president and my colleagues for that. Thank you. All right. Thank you again, everyone, for being here today. I'm Lisa Bender. I'm the president of the Minneapolis City Council. I'll call to order this regular meeting of the city council for March 13th, and ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Council member Johnson.
Here.
Palmasano.
Present.
Gordon is absent. Kano.
Here.
Reich.
Here.
Fletcher.
Here.
Jenkins.
Here.
Schrader.
Here.
Worsami.
Present.
Cunningham is absent. Ellison.
Present.
Goodman.
Present.
President Bender.
Here.
There are 11 members present.
Let the record reflect that there is a quorum. We have a number of amendments to today's agenda with a number of items moving unexpectedly. I thought today's meeting was going to be brief and very straightforward, but we know we have to be prepared for the unexpected. So I do have three motions to amend the agenda. They are all in front of you, on behalf of myself and others and city business, so, and then I will also pause, of course, to see if others have any other amendments. So the first item to include under the Order of New Business, I'll move to amend the agenda to include the appointment of the executive director of the Minneapolis Public Housing Authority. We received a letter from the chair of the Minneapolis Public Housing Authority Board yesterday afternoon, and they have, they have themselves made the decision to appoint Abdi Worsami as the director of the Minneapolis Public Housing Authority. This is subject to council approval, so in order to work together with them to fill the position as they're transitioning their interim director out, is leaving for another job, this would be then going to HPD next cycle and back to the planning, or back to the full city council in two weeks. So that is a motion to amend the agenda under the Order of New Business for that item. The second motion is to include under the Order of Adjournment, a security briefing as part of a closed session related to the emergency response procedures, intended to the public health and safety considerations related to the COVID-19 virus. We also have prepared a update for the public health, the peace committee on Monday, as well as a public safety meeting on Wednesday. And during this item, I have a, oh, sorry, and then I have a third item as well, but that would be a closed session for council members to be able to hear those specific issues related to health and security. I want to assure the public that there's no secret, you know, items being discussed there. The mayor will be participating in a press event with the governor later today, and we have many mechanisms to share information with the public plan as well. And then the third item, the motion to amend the agenda, would be a motion by me to order, include under the Order of New Business, a staff direction related to some external preparations that are underway in, related to our community response to the COVID-19 virus. This is by no means an exhaustive list, and it does not include all the preparations that are happening for our internal preparations as a workplace. That will be part of the discussion at the closed session, briefings of council members, and the two committee meetings that are happening next week. So I want to assure folks that this is not an exhaustive list, but it is intended to give direction and signal to our staff who are already working on preparations to support residents and businesses, that they have the support of city leadership and the city council. And this reflects a lot of things that we heard at a leadership meeting yesterday. So apologies for the long-winded descriptions for each of these, but those are three motion items to move to amend the agenda. Of course, each will have their own discussion later. Are there any other items to amend the agenda? I don't see any. Is there any discussion on those three items? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Those carry, and the agenda has been amended. Is there a motion to adopt the agenda as amended?
So moved.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. That carries, and the agenda is amended. The next item is consideration of the minutes from our February 28th meeting. May I have a motion to accept those minutes?
So moved.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. That carries, and those minutes are accepted. And finally, we have the referral of matters to proper standing committees in the next cycle. May I have that motion?
So moved.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. That carries, and those referrals are made. The next order of business is reports from our standing committees, and first, we have the report from our Economic Development and Regulatory Services Committee, given by the chair, council member Goodman.
Thank you, Madam President. The Economic Development and Regulatory Services Committee is bringing seven items forward for approval this morning. Item number one is a new business license. Item two are liquor license approvals. Item three are the liquor license renewals. You'll note there are 113 of those moving forward today. Item four are the gambling license approvals. Five and six are rental dwelling license reinstatements. And item number seven is the lease termination agreement for the property at 10 West Lake Street, which is terminating the lease with Kmart, and that has been much discussed, which is probably the largest item on today's agenda. I'm happy to move items one through seven for approval this morning.
Council member Goodman has moved the committee report. Is there any discussion? I don't see any others. I will put myself in queue. We have talked a lot about the lease agreement with Kmart, but it is just such a momentous moment that I just want to pause and really especially thank and lift up the contributions of so many people who laid the groundwork for us getting to this moment. You know, a lot of times, the work that we do while we get to be in these chairs, while we get to be in these roles, is building on the work of others who have laid the groundwork. And this is the case so much with this project, which is focused on reopening Nicollet Avenue at Lake Street. In the 1970s, a store was built across our roadway. It's an important pedestrian connection. It's an important transit connection, citywide, reaching across the city, north to south. And it is a huge priority for the community who lives around this site, where they've been disconnected and cut off. And frankly, the place has really been designed around car travel through the neighborhood instead of those important community connections. And so, this project really became a priority for the city because of those community leaders who stepped up and asked us to take action. The city first took formal action on this in 1998, and council member Robert Lilligren was instrumental in bringing, putting all of the pieces in place that it took to get us here, developing a small area plan in coordination with community leader, leaders at the Whittier Alliance, Lindell Organization, the business associations nearby, and so many community partners who are there today, ready to be partners still as we go forward. Council, former council vice president Elizabeth Glidden and I had monthly meetings for the entire four years of last term. We met every single month, putting, you know, putting those pieces in place, building off of the work that council member Lilligren and others had laid down, with the support and guidance and help of the chairs, council member Goodman at the time, and still, the economic development chair, and council member Reich, the transportation and public works chair. Council president Barb Johnson was a supporter of getting the funds in place when we needed to quickly act. And all of the mayors who've been in office, Mayor Ryback, Mayor Hodges, Mayor Frye, have been supporters and advocates for this project. So all of that work is so appreciated, and I wanted to highlight all of it. I do want to say a couple of things about what will happen going forward, and also pause and just thank so much the staff who've put in, you know, countless hours getting us here, and we're so smart and strategic. I said this in committee, but it's often difficult for a public entity to act in the private market. We can't move as quickly as private actors. We can't, you know, often we have limitations in budget that private sector may not have as, as much constraint. And our staff, led by David Frank, in three different roles at CPED, have been nimble and strategic. Mr. Frank built relationships with folks at three different private entities that were needed to have agreements with the city in order to gain full control of this site and reopen Nicollet Avenue. And his team has been extraordinary in moving quickly when needed, in, you know, in keeping the communication lines open when things are moving slowly, and really are the reason that we are here today. I truly believe it's because of David Frank's efforts and the efforts of his team. We have so many partners in the city attorney's office, and the city coordinator's office, and the public works department, who've been there as supporters and collaborators. And then now going forward, you know, I think all of us are so excited to imagine the future of this site. There is extraordinary opportunity to connect pedestrian connections, to make a safe and vibrant street, to build a transit connection that is more inviting and reliable for residents, not just there in the immediate neighborhood, but citywide. But we also know that this is a neighborhood and an area of our city that is undergoing extraordinary pressure and displacement today. The Whittier neighborhood, which I represent, is 90% renter, and I believe it is one of the most quickly changing neighborhoods in our city, where folks are constantly at risk of losing their homes, where we have many small businesses, many immigrant-owned businesses that are renting their property and are also at risk for displacement. So I just want to say so very clearly that everything, that even the very preliminary discussions that have taken place so far with policymakers and staff, are really aimed at both of those goals, of thinking big about our future, looking out 50 years or more, and understanding how this can help us meet our sustainability and our race equity goals, our city building goals, creating, again, a more connected neighborhood here, but also understanding that the people who live there today, who own the businesses today, will be front and center, and especially putting every measure we can in place to ensure that this is an inclusive and affordable and welcoming place for the people who are there today going forward. We've already had conversations with the Minneapolis Public Housing Authority about incorporating, you know, public housing here, potentially with the land trust on both the housing and the commercial side. We have strong partners in the community. Of course, there's public housing very nearby here as, today. So all of those partners are ready to go. I know many more in the community and throughout our city, community are ready to pitch in and help meet these dual goals of dreaming about the future, but also honoring the contributions of the people who are there today and protecting the most vulnerable in our communities. So I'm excited to work with all of you, my colleagues, with the mayor, with the community here, to reach those goals. And again, so thankful to all the work that got us to this moment. We look forward to cutting the ribbon. I promised council member Lilligren that he would be the person like cutting the ribbon or, you know, I don't know, hitting the mallet into the wall. So I, I stand by that promise to him, and I'm excited for that day and all the moments to come in this project. Council vice president Jenkins.
Thank you, Madam President, and thank you for that, for those words and those reassurances that a deep concern for anti-displacement will be exhibited, you know, as, as a policy aid to both of the aforementioned council members. I have attended the vast majority of all those conversations that you noted, and today is just a really emotional and exciting day, I think, for, for all the people you named, but, but even more importantly, for the, the community. I mean, you run into people in that community all the time, in the Whittier neighborhood, in the East Phillips neighborhood, and Powderhorn and Central neighborhoods, and Lindell. And the first question that comes up is, when are you going to reopen Nicollet? And, and we're finally able to, to say, soon. You know, relative to council member Lilligren, you know, I think he left us an example of how to do development without displacement, and that model would be the Midtown Global Market. And I think we can look to that as a, as a blueprint for how we can create a really, I think, responsive and responsible developments in that area. So I'm really excited to work with all the staff and the community to come up with a plan, and yeah, it's just a really exciting day. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other comments or discussion? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Council member Johnson.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Kano.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Fletcher.
Aye.
Jenkins.
Aye.
Schrader.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Ellison.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
President Bender.
Aye.
There are 12 ayes.
That carries, and that report is adopted. The next report is from our enterprise committee, which will be presented by the chair, council member Palmasano.
Thank you, Madam President. There are two items being brought forward from the enterprise committee meeting this cycle. The first is gift acceptance for some travel to Cleveland State University for the Smart Cities Surveillance and Privacy Conference. This is for our staff member JP Heisel. I do want to mention that since this time that we had enterprise committee, this event has been canceled, but it does say there may be an opportunity to reschedule. So I think the best action here is just to continue to move forward with this motion, should it be rescheduled sometime, you know, this year. And item number two is a contract with Be Fresh Productions for the future of our community media access services to manage public access television. The owners and operators of Be Fresh came to committee, and we had a short presentation on this. I move both of these items for approval.
Councilwoman Palmasano has moved the committee report. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Council member Johnson.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Kano.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Fletcher.
Aye.
Jenkins.
Aye.
Schrader.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Ellison.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
President Bender.
Aye.
There are 12 ayes.
That carries, and that report is adopted. The next report is from the Housing Policy and Development Committee, and I see council member Gordon is here. It'll be given by Chair Gordon.
Thank you, President Bender. The Housing Policy and Development Committee is bringing forward two contract amendments for your consideration today. The first is an amendment with Minneapolis Public Housing Authority for the Stable Homes, Stable Schools Initiative, and the second is a contract amendment with Ellie Mae for loan administration software services. I will move both items for approval.
Councilmember Gordon has moved the committee report. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Council member Johnson.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Kano.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Fletcher.
Aye.
Jenkins.
Aye.
Schrader.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Ellison.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
President Bender.
Aye.
There are 12 ayes.
That carries, and that report is adopted. The next report is from our Intergovernmental Relations Committee, given by the chair, council member Johnson.
Thank you, Madam President. The Intergovernmental Relations Committee brings forward one item today. It's an amendment to our legislative agenda and policy positions related to catalytic converters. I will note that the language on the agenda is a little off from what was passed at committee. What we passed at committee wasn't regarding the use of technology. It was greater regulation and enforcement from the state to help stem the tide of catalytic converter thefts, which are really affecting a lot of working people across the city. I'll go ahead and move that amendment to the agenda, or to our legislative agenda.
Thank you, council member Johnson. I'm just pausing to see where it's, okay, we're bringing the, I see, the, the resolution is under TPW. Yep.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
For I-94, 250.
Thank you, council member. Councilmember Johnson has moved the committee report. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Johnson.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Kano.
Ah.
Reich.
Aye.
Fletcher.
Aye.
Jenkins.
Aye.
Schrader.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Ellison.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
President Bender.
Aye.
There are 12 ayes.
That item, those items carry, and the report is adopted. The next report will come from the Public Health, Environment, Civil Rights and Engagement Committee, presented by the vice chair, council member Gordon.
Thank you very much, President Bender. The Peace Committee is bringing forward two items. The first is a grant application to the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services for a strategic prevention framework to support their partnership for success efforts, or that's the grant. And the second item is accepting a small addition to a grant from the statewide health improvement partnership funds. This is $5,000 to support walkable community workshops and the action plan implementation for the Glendale Town Homes. I will move both items forward for approval.
Councilwoman Gordon has moved the committee report. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Johnson.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Kano.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Fletcher.
Aye.
Jenkins.
Aye.
Schrader.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Ellison.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
President Bender.
Aye.
There are 12 ayes.
That carries, and that report is adopted. The next report is from our Public Safety and Emergency Management Committee, given by the chair, council member Kano.
Thank you, Madam President, and the Public Safety and Emergency Management Committee has two items to bring forward today. One is authorizing a contract with the University of Minnesota Veterinary Medical Center for Police Canine Health Services. And item number two is accepting a grant from, from the Women's Foundation of Minnesota for grant expenses related to the testing of the sex assault exam kits. And with that, I move these two items forward, these two items forward, and stand for any questions.
Councilmember Kano has moved the committee report. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Johnson.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Kano.
Aye.
Reich. The first is an amendment with Minneapolis Public Housing Authority for the Stable Homes, Stable Schools Initiative, and the second is a contract amendment with Ellie Mae for loan administration software services. I will move both items for approval.
Councilmember Gordon has moved the committee report. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Johnson.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Kano.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Fletcher.
Aye.
Jenkins.
Aye.
Schrader.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Ellison.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
President Bender.
Aye.
There are 12 ayes.
That carries, and those items are adopted. The next report is from the Transportation and Public Works Committee, given by the Chair, Councilmember Schrader.
Thank you, Madam President. The Committee will be moving forward with 11 items today. Item one is the 2020 Street Reservicing Program for the Fuller South Residential Designation. Two is also for the Fuller South Residential Street Reserving Project Approval of the Assessments. Three is the 37th Avenue Northeast Street Reservicing Project Approval and Assessment. Four is the airway abandonment at 2303 Kennedy Street, and 2330 Kennedy Street, and 2345 Kennedy Street, and there's an assessment associated with that. Five, there's the Wordplay Large Block Event Permit for May 9. Six is the Rock the Garden Large Block Event for June 20. Seven is the Minnesota Green Core Program Application to Host Green Core Member for the 2020 and 2021 program year. Eight is the Contract Amendment with Egan Companies Incorporated for the Leamington and Hoff Parking Ramps Lady Retrofit Project. Nine is the Cooperative Construction Agreement with the Minnesota Department of Transportation for Third Avenue South Bridge Project Rottner Main and Traffic Infrastructure. Ten is the Joint Powers Agreement with MinDOT for the Third Avenue Bridge Project regarding the Traffic Control Mitigation Plan. And eleven is the Highway 252-I-94-Minpass Expansion Project, and there's a resolution associated with that stating community and city priorities. I move all items, Madam President.
Councilmember Reich has moved the committee report. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Ellison.
Just wanted to say quickly that I want to thank my colleagues for, and everyone who's involved in helping crafting the resolution, and that I think that because of councilmembers being sick, myself being sick, Councilmember Cunningham being sick, there's a staff direction that we weren't able to pull together, but that we will be working with the, reaching out to the City Attorney's Office to talk about a future staff direction related to this item. That's all.
Thank you. Councilmember Reich.
Thank you, Madam President. I would go to do, note two things. This was forwarded without recommendation, so I will move as amended through the committee work that we did. And given that that work was carried by three of my colleagues, I wish they would be named formally by the Clerk. That would be Ellison, Bender, and Cunningham.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Councilmember Schrader.
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to thank the four colleagues that have worked on this, and just also make it very clear that this is not a North Minneapolis issue. This is an issue that affects all of Minneapolis. The same kind of thing was proposed on the 35W expansion. My constituents and others stood up, demanded transit, demanded a better plan, and got that. And that is exactly what we were expecting to happen. That needs to happen in North Minneapolis as well.
Thank you, Councilmember Schrader. I put myself in queue. We had some discussion about this at the IGR Committee the other day, on Wednesday, but I did just want to reiterate to my support for Councilmembers Ellison and Cunningham. I was able to attend a policymaker meeting with them, along with folks from MinDOT and Metro Transit, the county, and the other project partners. And, you know, things are moving very quickly for this project in some ways, but it is also a very long-term project in other ways, and I think we're at a critical turning point where decisions are being made about the scope of the project, the scope of the environmental review, you know, the time is now, or even potentially a bit past and late for us to have the pieces in place to have transit ready to go as part of this project. And so we were really encouraged at that meeting to be clear about the city's position, and I think my colleagues have said it, but I'll reiterate that the city of Minneapolis' position on this project is that we need to guard the health and well-being of our residents in North Minneapolis, who are still suffering the impacts of the I-94 corridor cutting through their neighborhood to begin with. And that transit is a non-negotiable piece of this project for us, from a standpoint of transportation equity, of equity across our city enterprise, and as we did with the 35W corridor for us here, our standards are equal for our residents in North Minneapolis to have access to mitigate the harm of freeway, you know, the existing freeway and freeway expansion in their community. And we feel, I think, very strongly that, you know, standing together with community members in these three communities that are impacted by the project, there's a lot of concern from folks about traffic volumes almost doubling through their communities, and the air quality and environmental health impacts of that. There's remaining concerns about the freeway itself and about lack of mitigation for past harms. There's concern about the loss of homes as proposed as part of the expansion project outside of the borders of Minneapolis. So I think we stand in solidarity with those within our community and in the other communities who are raising these concerns. So again, appreciate so much the leadership of our colleagues, Ellison and Cunningham, and reiterate my support, and I think the body's support for their leadership. Councilmember Gordon.
Thank you very much. I just wanted to pile on a little bit here, too. I think it's really significant that the city is on record now opposing the current design that's coming forward, and we are expecting it to improve and to be a lot better. I think this is probably just the beginning of what's going to be an ongoing effort and challenge to make sure that we get what the people deserve out of this project, and I'm glad that we're able to go on record and state our position so carefully and articulately. So appreciate that, and let's see if we can't really make a big difference here.
Thank you. Councilmember Ellison.
Yeah, I'll keep my second comment short, just because I, you know, I figured I said most of this at committee, but I just wanted to reiterate that there are a number of other city council members and mayors from other affected cities who are, who are part of all the same meetings we were a part of and who are feeling similarly about the design. And so we're also not just standing on the priorities for our own city, but also standing in solidarity with cities who are affected by this corridor as well. And also for, you know, for anyone at home, I know our ratings at the city council here are way up, who are tuning in and wondering sort of like, okay, what's going on with 94 and 252? You know, just as a bit of background, I'll keep it very short. 94 was a highway that really, that really decimated communities, multiple communities, black communities along its path. And so, and so I think it can be easy to just say like, okay, this is the existing highway. What's there to sort of like care about here? But I think it's really important that that be noted, that when you, that there are people who are still living in North Minneapolis today who very much so remember the damage that 94 caused. And even for folks like myself who have never lived life without 94 right there in the community, we've heard the stories and we know, and that that's not just true for North Minneapolis, but it's also true for the Rondo neighborhood in St. Paul. And that the, and that the damage caused was so much so that in Rondo, there's actually a project called Reconnect Rondo that's talking about building a land bridge, and that's far off, and that's sort of, it's a lofty goal to sort of cap a freeway, it's very expensive, but it's the, it's the freeways cause so much damage that those are the types of solutions that people are looking for. We're not asking for that here. Here, we're talking about making sure that we do not disrupt the existing connectivity and that, and that we don't expand the freeway. But I just wanted to sort of clarify, you know, for anyone at home looking and saying, this seems like a very technical issue, what is there to really care about here? That that's sort of the, some of the history and some of the impact that, that we're looking to address and in the future undo. So that's it.
Thank you. Councilmember Reich.
Absolutely do not want to have the last word on this, but in Councilmember Cunningham's absence, we may not be pushing for a lid at this point in time, but if that, our esteemed colleague gets his way with tricking out Dowling Avenue Bridge the way he wants, it'll be pretty darn close.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Council Vice President.
Wanted to make sure that Councilmember Reich did not get the last word. And I will add, only add that, you know, in South Minneapolis, very, very similar impacts of 35W have created many of the same issues that Councilmember Ellison described, as well as just separating the communities. We recently installed a new pedestrian bridge that will reconnect communities. It's an artist-designed pedestrian bridge designed by Saytu Jones, renowned, internationally-renowned artist who grew up in the neighborhood and actually witnessed the disruption of 35W, as well as the Rondo neighborhood in St. Paul that was mentioned. And I think, you know, we have seen the power of standing up to the forces that want to expand freeways in our communities through the efforts and the work of former councilmember Robert Lilligren, as well as former council vice president Elizabeth Glidden, who has just walked into the room, and really stood firm to say that we will not allow the expansion of our freeways, particularly without a transit option. And so this resolution today is really important step to reaffirm our commitment to our communities, and I think it's really going to create more safety. It helps us to meet our goals of eliminating the greenhouse impact of more cars traveling on our freeways. And so I'm really thrilled about this development and proud to support it. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
I won't count this as the last word, but I, I think I will add just that there is a meeting coming up, the next meeting of the, the policy group that has been meeting, will include, I think, leadership from MinDOT and Metro Transit. Their staff have been there, of course, and were at this last meeting that we had, but I believe that there's a lot of shared value there in the leadership of MinDOT and Metro Transit. It's just often, I think, with infrastructure projects, a matter of aligning our funding sources and our project timelines with those values and making sure that those values are front and center. And so I think, again, that the council, the city council members who were there have stated this very clearly verbally, and I think this action will just reinforce our position with our project partners and make it easier to figure out how to move forward on the safety improvements that were the intended impetus for this project. So thanks for everyone's comments. Is there anything else?
Seeing none, Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Johnson.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Kano.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Fletcher.
Aye.
Jenkins.
Aye.
Schrader.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Ellison.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
President Bender.
Aye.
There are 12 ayes.
That carries, and that report is adopted. The next report comes from the Ways and Means Committee, given by the Chair, Councilmember Worsami.
Thank you, Madam President. The Ways and Means Committee brings 11 items for approval today. Item number one is a legal settlement, workers' compensation claim of Brandy Steiberg. Item number two is a legal settlement, workers' compensation claim of John Ellen. Item number three is a legal settlement, claim of Abdi Hassan. Item number four is a legal settlement, Anthony Kelly versus Burnix et al. versus the City of Minneapolis. Item number five is an amicus status in lawsuits challenging federal administrations' climate-action-related policies. Item number six is a lease of city-owned land bounded by Second to Third Avenue South and Third to Fourth Streets South to Star Construction Company. Item number seven is an easement agreement with Tingle Town Development LLC for shared driveway at 5416 and 5426 Nicollet Avenue. Item number eight is a contract amendment with Wells Fargo Bank NA for banking services, and this is for bank accounts, checking, and related services. Item number nine is a 2019 budget closing adjustment. Item number 10 is a Capitol Long Range Improvement Committee Click Appointment, and this is approving the council appointment of Devin Wise for seat 10, Ward 5, to fill an unexpired two-year term beginning January 1, 2019, and ending December 31, 2020. And the final item is a 2020 Local Board of Appeal and Equalization, and I move approval of all 11 items.
Councilmember Worsami has moved the committee report. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Johnson.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Kano.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Fletcher.
Aye.
Jenkins.
Aye.
Schrader.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Ellison.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
President Bender.
Aye.
There are 12 ayes.
That carries, and that report is adopted. The next order of business is reports from special committees. We have a report from the Executive Committee this morning, given by Council Vice President Jenkins.
Thank you, Madam President. The Executive Committee brings forward three items to the council today for consideration. Item number one is the appointment of Mark Ruff to a two-year term as city coordinator. This item is slated to be referred to the Committee of the Whole for scheduling of a public hearing. Item number two is a collective bargaining agreement with the Ask Me Water Unit. And item number three is an agreement with the Teamsters Convention Center Custodians Unit. These two are slated to be referred to the Ways and Means Committee for consideration, and I move the Executive Committee report for approval.
Council Vice President has moved the committee report. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Johnson.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Kano.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Fletcher.
Aye.
Jenkins.
Aye.
Schrader.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Ellison.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
President Bender.
Aye.
There are 12 ayes.
That carries, and that report is adopted. The next order of business is resolutions, and we have an honorary resolution declaring multiple sclerosis this week. Are there any further comments from councilmembers? Seeing none, all in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed, say no. That carries, and the honorary resolution is adopted. The next order of business is motions, and we have a motion from Councilmember Palmasano to discharge from the Public Safety and Emergency Management Committee further consideration of a grant application to the Department of Justice. I'll call in Councilmember Palmasano to speak to that motion.
Thank you, Madam President. This is the motion that I have been sharing with colleagues, and the final motion that I sent out earlier yesterday. I want to say this, in the past couple of weeks, that supporting Chief Aradondo and his vision will at times take both trust in the work of dedicated staff at City Hall and also political will. I'm asking you to have that today, and we discussed this item and had a presentation at Public Safety. Our chief spoke for about an hour with our colleagues for their questions at Public Safety, and then we discussed it again at Committee of the Whole this week. preserve the historic treasures and maybe what other things we need to change in terms of our policies. Certainly appreciate the engagement of everybody in it and appreciate the patience and the efforts of our city staff and my colleagues up here to try to get to this resolution.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion on the zoning and planning report? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Johnson.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Kano.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Fletcher.
Aye.
Jenkins.
Aye.
Schrader.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Ellison.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
President Bender.
Aye.
There are 12 ayes.
That carries, and that report is adopted. The next order of business is reports from special committees. We have a report from the Executive Committee this morning, given by Council Vice President Jenkins.
Thank you, Madam President. The Executive Committee brings forward three items to the council today for consideration. Item number one is the appointment of Mark Ruff to a two-year term as City Coordinator. This item is slated to be referred to the Committee of the Whole for scheduling of a public hearing. Item number two is a collective bargaining agreement with the Ask Me Water Unit. And item number three is an agreement with the Teamsters Convention Center Custodians Unit. These two are slated to be referred to the Ways and Means Committee for consideration, and I move the Executive Committee report for approval.
Council Vice President has moved the committee report. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Johnson.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Kano.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Fletcher.
Aye.
Jenkins.
Aye.
Schrader.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Ellison.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
President Bender.
Aye.
There are 12 ayes.
That carries, and the report is adopted. The next order of business is resolutions, and we have an honorary resolution declaring multiple sclerosis this week. Are there any further comments from council members? Seeing none, all in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed say no. That carries, and the honorary resolution is adopted. The next order of business is motions, and we have a motion from Councilmember Palmasano to discharge from the Public Safety and Emergency Management Committee further consideration of a grant application to the Department of Justice. I'll call in Councilmember Palmasano to speak to that motion.
Thank you, Madam President. This is the motion that I have been sharing with colleagues and the final motion that I sent out earlier yesterday. I want to say this, in the past couple of weeks, that supporting Chief Aradondo and his vision will at times take both trust in the work of dedicated staff at City Hall and also political will. I'm asking you to have that today, and we discussed this item and had a presentation at Public Safety. Our chief spoke for about an hour with our colleagues for their questions at Public Safety, and then we discussed it again at Committee of the Whole this week. I have listened to the concerns and ideas voiced by my colleagues, even at the Committee of the Whole, and I've really taken them to heart. I think that what I've prepared, this three staff directions that would be my second motion here, should we discharge this item, speak directly to that. I want to lift up something briefly mentioned by Council Vice President Jenkins at Committee of the Whole, that there's very much a need for a dedicated traffic unit to investigate motor vehicle and pedestrian bike collisions. There have been many cases over the last several years where we have not, we've had to use our own internal civilian investigators in the city attorney's office, not MPD, to work up cases for charging because our officers don't have the bandwidth to do it. These are cases that sometimes involve a tragic fatality. I cannot imagine how that looks to the courts and to the juries and to the families of the victims where the police haven't even been able to work up those cases. A traffic and pedestrian safety unit is not simply about pulling people over. There is a real need for it, and it goes to Vision Zero and the other priorities that we all support as a city. If our Public Safety Committee wanted to have more conversation on the item, I think we would allow it to come to council for all of us to discuss it. If we wanted staff to do more with this or to provide more information, since this was referred back in February, we would have told them to do so when we referred it back to them in committee. These last several weeks since it was referred originally to that committee back in February by our council, I've been asking a lot of questions of MPD, and I find them often deep in the work of emergency planning, given urgent issues in our global environment. I know they're ready to ensure our first responders are ready to respond and have needed resources. I urge my colleagues that this is not the right time to be asking MPD to provide additional analysis. So I ask that we continue this effort if we end up with the opportunity to receive these funds, which in committee, with nearly an hour of the chief's time, it was explained we would not know until the August or September timeframe. So I'm moving to discharge this item from committee because of timeliness and because I think we're ready to move forward. I want to move this forward in a manner that increases transparency and that also includes the thoughtful work from Councilmember Cunningham and the budget cycle. So in the motion to follow, if this is successful, there are three really important things. One is the way this money would be transparently included and considered, fully in our next budget cycle. The second is even more opportunities for the public to share their feedback, a public hearing, should we receive the grant monies or, and be in a position to accept them at Public Safety Committee. And item three is to ensure we are delaying reestablishment of this unit until and with the recommendations from the work group established to ensure racial disparity issues are fully addressed. These protections, I think, are really important. Councilmember Cunningham reached out this morning to me when he couldn't be in today, and he expressed his support for discharging this item from committee so we could discuss it as a full council and discuss potential pathways to address the concerns about the grant application process. We can do engagement work around this, working with constituents, and do so in a way that addresses racial disparities. We can't do any of that if it dies in committee and gets deleted from the agenda. When we choose to administratively pull that item without clarity as to how it will look when it comes back or what staff are supposed to do with it, I believe we're sending it into purgatory. That's all I have to say, Madam Chair, Madam President. I have this motion to discharge this item before you, and I move that motion.
Thank you. Councilmember Palmasano's motion is before us. I see council members in queue. I do want to note before the discussion that this motion will require the support of two-thirds of the council members present in order to be successful because it is an action to discharge the work from the committee and bring it to the full city council instead. Councilmember Fletcher.
Thank you, President Bender. Just wanted to respond to a couple of things. We've had most of this conversation in Committee of the Whole and a very substantive conversation, as you noted, in Public Safety. And I just want to speak to the timeliness question, both because it was not a given that it would take this long for us to see it, that we would be seeing it this late, and in fact, the deadline has passed as we debate this today. A quick Google search reveals cities that were voting on this as early as February 4th. So there are police departments around the country that brought this forward with more time for consideration. I also want to just be clear that I have been asking for a report, asking the mayor and the chief for a report on why our racial disparities in traffic enforcement are what they are. And I even went as far as to solicit credible third parties who could do that report and bring at least one proposal forward as one possible path to getting that information. We still do not have it. So this is not something that I would attribute to timing around coronavirus and the emergency of the moment in terms of asking for analysis. I've been asking for this analysis for a year since there were community members in here raising this issue back in January of 2019. So I just want to be very clear that this is an ongoing conversation, and it's my view that having asked for that multiple times, both privately with the mayor and the chief and in public, that at some point, continuing to approve whatever funding is requested on this topic without getting answers to the questions that I have, is a formula for never having accountability. And I think that's really what the work of the Public Safety Committee has been, is to try to create some accountability around the work that we're doing together, to figure out when we are making investments, as we did in our budget deal in December. How are we also pairing that with the city's values and with some accountability around that? And having not received answers to my questions, it's very hard to move anything forward. So I just, I want to name that timeliness is really not a reason to move this forward right now, that it did not have to be this way, and that we've been asking for these, for this analysis for much, much longer than this grant debate.
Thank you. I put myself in queue to speak. I don't serve on the Public Safety Committee, and I know there was a robust discussion there, more on some of the substantive issues and, you know, the ongoing work that that committee is doing. I want to make a few points, though, from my perspective. First, I do want to highlight that discharging work from a committee is an unusual step to take, and I would caution against drawing any particular conclusions about what precedent this might set or not regarding those kinds of actions. But it is an unusual thing to do and something that we typically don't, don't do because we leave the work of committees to happen in, in committee. And in this case, I think our perspectives may differ a bit based on how we approached the compromise that we made as a body with the mayor during our budget process a couple of months ago. So for me, those compromise elements that were so important to get my support and comfort to supporting an $8 million annual increase in MPD's budget in December, those, those pieces were significant and meaningful, and that was that we were not increasing the number of sworn officers in the department. That was a critical piece of the agreement that I agreed to, that we were investing instead in training to bring our capacity up to those that are authorized today. For me, the piece is the staff direction that I co-authored with Councilmember Cunningham around enforcement. I'm serious about that. I take that very seriously. I've been working on traffic safety for 20 years, and I can tell you a number of things. I could go on at length about the facts and what data and research shows and what the experience of other cities show about traffic enforcement related to traffic deaths. I'll state very simply that simply reducing the speed limit eliminates crashes. In cities that don't increase enforcement, it eliminates crashes. We know from around the country that speed cameras and camera enforcement is the number one way to have a meaningful impact on safety and enforcement, and we are working very hard to earn the support of our legislature to be able to do that. We also know from the experience of other cities that targeted and strategic enforcement is necessary, both to have a meaningful impact on street safety, so that we can look our constituents in the eye and say, this is actually making you safer in the streets. And that work is forthcoming. The, the group that we set up during that staff direction hasn't even met yet. And so I take that seriously. I meant that before we established a traffic division, the work should be done, not just beginning, not contemplated for the future. And I know my colleagues, many folks are more involved than I am in the staffing study, but that was also a piece of the discussion and the compromise and the agreement that we came to that enabled a lot of us to be able to support an $8 million annual investment in the police department just two months ago. And this grant, to be clear, I know this came up at committee, but this is the city agreeing to spend millions more dollars in, of public money in our police department. So talking about process, I think, for some in the community who want us to use every single lever that we have council members to create accountability and more public transparency and more civilian oversight in our department, the budget is an important lever, and to come in through a backdoor process a couple of months later, to commit the city to adding millions more dollars to the police department with no public hearing, with very little public discussion, feels outside the spirit of the agreement that we made just a couple of months ago. I want to get to a place where I feel really proud of the work of our Minneapolis Police Department, and I know that we have leadership from Chief Aradondo, from the staff who are sitting in the room today, from the leadership of the department. They're working very hard to create cultural change, to create policy change, to make strategic and smart investments in our department. And I know that also, as a policymaker, when our departments are going through meaningful change and transformational change, that it's important for us to have high standards and to be clear and to follow through on our direction. Our staff directions are meaningless if we don't stick with them. And so I just want to underscore again that the agreement that we came to, to the budget, was meaningful to me, and those elements that came out of that agreement were meaningful. I stand by them, and I don't want to, you know, take away from the work that is happening and those progress, I don't know, those important elements that were part of that, part of that discussion. So I don't think this is closing the door to future investments, certainly not in traffic enforcement. There's significant interest in that. I mean, it's clear the work is starting in April to put the pieces in place that we need for that to be successful. So I think, you know, we have another budget proposal coming from the mayor soon. You know, he's made clear his commitment to increasing the police force and to continue to increase the funding for the police department. So I anticipate more proposals in that spirit in the future. So this will be an ongoing discussion, but today, I think, it's clear to me that this is really, you know, coming forward and just so quickly after our budget discussions in a way that I can't support. Councilmember Ellison.
Thank you, Madam President. I did want to thank Councilmember Palmasano for the amount of transparency in forwarding this and getting this to us before today. I think it's a great example of how we can be transparent with each other even when we don't agree. I did want to, sort of just to, just to add to what my colleagues have said so far, that the timeline piece, I think, is difficult. We've heard a couple of things. One is that, well, this came up so fast and that we didn't have time to talk to committee members and, and committee members weren't talked to. We did have a great discussion in committee, but, but for the most part, committee members weren't, weren't talked to prior to committee about what this was, about the why. And even during that discussion, I think that, to Councilmember Schrader's point, we, we have been asking for information about how we're going to make sure we're not increasing racial bias in, 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 in traffic enforcement, when that has been the history of traffic enforcement. And while we got some great, I think, immediate responses, there was, there's no plan. There's no sort of research. There's no way to implement a great strategy to ensure that we do not sort of steepen the racial disparities when it comes to traffic enforcement. And, and then, and then also, again, I want to reiterate that referring this back to staff to, for them to work on and for them to make sure that we have a great proposal, I don't agree that that sort of effectively kills this. We know that we haven't had a, a, a COPS grant in, in a number of years, partially because of a lawsuit related to sanctuary cities. And so we can anticipate that these grants are going to be available with more frequency. That's my understanding, as I've gotten a little bit more familiar with this issue. And so I don't agree that, that, that we've effectively killed this in committee. I think that this is, that we believe this needed more work. I think it's evident that it does, and that we were earnest in saying, in referring this back to staff to say, let's, let's get some more, some more work to this. And, and I, and to the council president's point, I do have an issue with us taking on, I think, two critical issues that people, that the public will want to have a huge say in, and that did, that they did have a huge say in just a couple of months ago, and that is whether or not we're going to increase the number of sworn officers. This grant will sign us up to do that. And, and also that this grant is, it's not, you know, quote unquote, free money, right? It's, it's, it's 1.2, but signing the city up for 4.6 million, right? That's a, that's a huge investment that we're, that we're, that we're signing up for. And so, and so I just wanted to say that it's, it's, it's for those reasons. We don't know how we're going to ensure that we don't increase racial disparities. There's budget implications that the public's not a part of. There's staffing implications that the public has not been a part of. Those are the reasons that, that I won't be supporting discharging this from committee. And, and lastly, I do think that the committee did its work and did its job in referring this back to staff. And so for those four reasons, I won't be supporting discharging it from committee.
Councilmember Schrader.
Thank you, Madam President. I echo the sentiments of Councilmember Ellison. I think that, for me, I was not on the, I'm not on the committee, but I really feel like this is budgeting outside the budget process. It is something that, in applying for the grant, it signs us up, it commits us to ten new officers. These aren't something we can just say we're going to take, put officers in different areas. This clearly states by the grant itself that it has to go over and be new officers. By the end of the year, we'll be at our set amount that, as Councilmember Ellison says, you know, we have had a lot of public discussion about, and to have this go through outside of the budget process, outside of the budget time, outside of all of the public hearings that go along with that, I feel is a wrong precedent. The one other thing I'd like to add, I just, it's a very, I kind of see this pattern going on, and it's very frustrating, that the city council has a lot of leverage over most departments except for the police department. And it, it looks differently, and this is a great example of that, where the police department, the police chief, and the mayor have a lot of discretion to determine how that looks, how public safety looks. There's a lot of leeway to come up with pilot programs, to come up with other ways to do things, but what we keep seeing and what we keep hearing is only about the budget. That is the one thing city council can say, and we're not hearing reports back on things that can be improved. We're not hearing reports back of how things can be more effective. We're not hearing what the police department is working on, on its own. And that would be very helpful when we're discussing the one thing that we can talk about, which is the budget, to be able to see what the police department is working on to really show that they are working on what they see as the community has brought up and working on those issues.
Thank you. Any further discussion on the motion? Again, this motion requires a two-thirds vote of councilmembers present to be successful. What is two-thirds of 12?
Madam President, it would be eight affirmative votes.
Okay, thank you. Nice to have the clerk say that officially. Seeing no more discussion, I'll ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Councilmember Johnson.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
No.
Kano.
No.
Reich.
Aye.
Fletcher.
No.
Jenkins.
Aye.
Schrader.
No.
Worsami.
Aye.
Ellison.
Nope.
Goodman.
Aye.
President Bender.
No.
There are six ayes and six nays.
So that motion does not carry, but again, echoing Councilmember Ellison's comment, I do very much appreciate Councilmember Palmasano's transparency and communication with this, and I know it is part of many ongoing discussions within the Public Safety Committee and beyond. So that will stay within the Public Safety and Emergency Management Committee. I know that Chair Kano and Vice Chair Fletcher are talking with staff and each other and the clerks about the procedures for the next steps for that, but essentially it just stays with staff until the, you know, the, the work has been completed as, as in discussion with the chairs. Okay. Councilmember Palmasano.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to move to direct the Public Safety and Emergency Management Committee to report back with its recommendation on the COPS grant application for the next regular meeting of the city council. That would be consistent with what you just said.
That is not what I said, but I'm happy to take the motion. So Councilmember Palmasano has moved to direct the committee to come back with a work product. Mr. Clerk, could you help us with that motion, which I'm not sure we've had during my time as president?
Madam President, the motion I've taken down is that this is a motion to direct the Public Safety Emergency Management Committee to report back its recommendation on the COPS grant application to the full council in the next cycle.
Okay, we have a motion before us. Is there any discussion on that motion? Yes. Councilmember Palmasano.
Thank you, Madam Chair. If I might just explain myself a little bit. You did say that we would consider this in Public Safety Committee. I thought, I heard you say as early as next week or in the next cycle. I would like just to ensure that we are going to do that and have something to come back to the next regular council meeting with, with a recommendation for or against this grant application and not leave it undue numbers of cycles in committee.
Okay, and maybe just to clarify, the, the grant deadline has passed as of today, as of Wednesday, today. It has passed, as of Wednesday, it is no longer open, so I, I So I knew now, based on the rules that we passed through our budget committee, as the city council, departments are required to get approval from the city council prior to submitting grant applications that meet a number of criteria, as this one does, because it requires city matching funds, because it is over a certain dollar amount. So I'm not, so my intended comment was to defer the next steps to the chair of the committee in conversation with the department. I believe the intention of the motion at committee was to ask the department to fulfill some of the previous staff directions related to this budget request. And so, I mean, I'm happy to defer to members of the committee, and I see Councilmember Ellison in queue.
Just wanted to say that if, that if in committee we referred this back to staff and we were hoping to hear back from staff, some updates about traffic enforcement, maybe some of the data that Councilmember Fletcher has been, has been mentioning, and that the committee, this seems like it would be drastically limiting the committee's discretion, which is what the committee is designed to do, is have discretion and interact with staff. And so, and so, so I do find, the first motion I fully understood, both, you know, this motion I don't understand as much, and so I think that if it's limiting the discretion of the, of the committee to sort of interact with staff and sort of signing us up to do one thing, then I feel like that's not something that I'm going to be able to support. So just wanted to name that.
Thank you. Councilmember Gordon.
I put my name in place of the committee chair who's not signed in, and I would like to yield my time to her.
Councilmember Kano.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I am using a different laptop today, so I don't have access to that little system we all have. So our agenda, of course, has, our agenda setting meeting has already happened. I apologize to my colleagues for having so much of the public safety work happen right now at the council meeting. That's very atypical, and I find it a little bit disheartening because we do have a process where we deal with these matters and we discuss these issues. And for now, the agenda is set already for next week, and as everybody knows, the priority is our emergency response to the COVID-19 crisis. I would like us to continue to stay focused on that. We've been spending a lot of time queuing up that presentation, and I don't want it to be negatively influenced by this other conversation, which is clearly only half-baked. And so I already spoke to Councilmember Palmasano this morning and explained to her that we need more conversations between council members and department heads in order to figure out what type of support and process this discussion needs to have a different outcome at the council level, and that's not going to happen by next week on Wednesday. So I do not support a motion to bring this forward to the committee by next Wednesday. Of course, we can continue to discuss this, and I, and I've expressed my interest in continuing to have conversations with the mayor, with Linay, with Councilmember Palmasano, with Councilmember Fletcher. So I don't think conversations here are shut down. It's just a matter of process and time and procedure, and that is not ripe or ready for next week. Thank you.
Thank you. I put myself in queue, and thank you, Chair Palmasano. My perspective is to support the, the perspective of the chair. Maybe echoing Councilmember Ellison's perspective, it feels a little bit like, I mean, this is a proper motion and we should, we should vote on it, but it feels a little bit like kind of trying to achieve the same objective as the motion to discharge, but maybe with a lower vote threshold. And I feel like we already had the discussion and vote about discharging the committee's work, which failed. So I don't support this other attempt to discharge the committee's work and override the decision of the committee to ask staff to do more work before a grant application is submitted. I'm concerned. If a grant application has gone in without the approval of the city council, as was required by our rules, this is for millions of dollars of public money, that should not be taking place by any department. I want to be very clear that that would apply to any department in the city of Minneapolis, and I would be extremely concerned if departments started submitting grants for millions of dollars of matching public funds or in violation of any other budget rules that we have adopted as a council. So I will follow up about that. Is there any further discussion on the motion before us? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Johnson.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
No.
Kano.
No.
Reich.
No.
Fletcher.
No.
Jenkins.
No.
Schrader.
No.
Worsami.
No.
Ellison.
No.
Goodman.
No.
President Bender.
No.
There are two ayes and 10 nays.
That motion fails, and the committee, the item will remain in the jurisdiction of the Public Safety Emergency Management Committee under the very capable leadership of Chair Kano. The next item, we do actually have two items of, under new business. Both were added as amendments to our agenda. The first is a motion before you to receive the appointment by the Minneapolis Public Housing Authority Board of Commissioners of Abdi Worsami as Executive Director of the MPHA, as well as to refer that nomination to the Housing Policy and Development Committee for further consideration. And this has been done in coordination with Chair Gordon and others, members of the committee, as much as I was able to catch people yesterday afternoon after receiving the communication from MPHA during a busy day. Is there any discussion on this motion?
Seeing none, I will just comment briefly. Part of my discussion with Chair Gordon about adding this to today's agenda, there were two considerations that we talked about. One was that, as I mentioned in the amendment earlier, the interim director is leaving to take a new job, and there are a number of reasons that this agency is hopeful that they can have their new director in place in time to have a smooth transition. This is one of the other areas of public life where COVID-19 is a consideration for our community members who live in public housing, many of whom are seniors. And I know Councilmember Worsami and his role as council member is already engaging on that issue, as well as a number of budget-related issues, maintenance issues. So we wanted to be supportive of the agency in being, having a smooth transition of leadership. The second consideration was that, in bringing this forward today as an amended walk-on item, was that there had been a lot of public discussion already, you know, in the media, in our own committee meetings at the MPHA, they had a public hearing there as the board. And so we felt comfortable that this item was in the public realm, the public knowledge for a significant period of time. So it'll be referred to the HPD committee next week and then go to the full city council meeting on Friday for consideration. I know that the clerk's office has been working on the issues related to having a potential absence, resignation of the ward six council member. And so we will, I think, work with Councilmember Ellison to schedule a briefing about any upcoming election or other things related, but please know that our clerk's office has been very proactive in working with city enterprise, with talking with the Secretary of State's office, and getting ourselves ready for a potential special election. So wanted to make those comments. Is there anything further on that, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. That carries, and the motion is adopted and will be referred to the next meeting of the Housing Policy and Development Committee. The second item is the one that I added, which I can't find right now, which is a motion, which is a staff direction related to COVID-19. And again, I wanted to bring this forward today to reflect some of the discussion that happened in, is happening in ongoing department head conversations, in leadership meetings. And by no means is this an exhaustive reflection of the city of Minneapolis's preparations for reacting to COVID-19 and supporting our staff, ourselves as policymakers, and our own staff in our offices and our community. Mayor Frye and I have been in contact today, so there will either be a press, I believe that the governor's office and the State Department of Health will be making an announcement early this afternoon, sharing some more health guidance from the Minnesota Department of Health. We and all of the other public agencies in Minnesota are looking to MDH for their expertise and guidance on preparations related to community health, so they'll be sharing more information about that this afternoon. I believe the city will then also have a separate communication opportunity this afternoon for us to share more about our own preparations after that more health-focused announcement takes place. I want to let my colleagues know, reiterating some things that I sent in an email yesterday that were communicated during a leadership meeting that we had. First of all, that our staff have been having very frequent phone calls and meetings as department heads, preparing ourselves as a workplace to make sure that our workforce is protected and healthy. We are currently in what I've been calling a prepare and accommodate phase, following the guidance of MDH, where we're making preparations in the case that folks need to be working from home. We're making preparations, cataloging all of the public meetings that are coming up in every single department in the city, assessing each of them and communicating any kind of alternative format or call-in options for folks. There are health advisories for those over the age of 60 or with pre-existing conditions, and we want to honor people's personal choices and accommodate folks who choose or cannot attend public meetings. So all of that work is underway. There's been significant preparation to support our own workforce, reviewing our own leave policies to, with an eye toward being as supportive as possible as our staff, dealing with health directives or things out of their control, like family members. So in the spirit of all the work that we've done on our own leave policies, those discussions are happening. The IT department is working hard to prepare our workforce for the potential of working from home. Departments are working to identify, you know, how they would structure staffing in the event of changing guidelines around our workforce or decisions that the city would make around our own workforce. An email went out about the preparations that the building commission is making for our own workspaces, related to sanitizing and some recommendations for us and our staff to follow as well. And so this, and then I do also want to say that we have a closed session coming up specific to those health and security-related issues and questions so that our staff can share and we can ask questions. The Public Health Committee will have a public discussion on Monday, the Public Safety will have a public discussion on Wednesday. Of course, our emergency management staff are working closely with first responders to ensure that they are protected, that we have what we need in place for them. And then this staff direction is specific to supporting our departments in the work that is already underway, for them to be supportive of community members who might have economic impacts from changes related to the COVID-19 response. So in addition to internal preparations to support the health and well-being of the city of Minneapolis employees, staff in all city departments are directed to take steps to ensure Minneapolis residents and businesses are supported during any economic impacts of COVID-19. The city attorney's office is directed to investigate the city's authority to take actions that would support residents and businesses through any economic and health impacts of COVID-19 in Minneapolis in coordination with the city of Minneapolis departments and external partners. This should include the preparations underway, such as housing stability tools, support for residents experiencing homelessness, shelter preparations and preparations with partners who supply housing, supporting healthy homes and businesses by ensuring the continued supply of water to homes and businesses, and reaching out to partners who supply energy to homes and businesses in the event of economic hardships, cataloging, preparing and communicating existing support available to residents or businesses who are experiencing economic hardship, and exploring additional tools in partnership with public and private sector partners, and working through IGR networks to support partnerships at all level of government to support residents, visitors, and businesses. So this was intended and shared with department heads to give them, again, the support that they need to continue with work that's already happening. Every single thing on this list is happening already through the leadership of many staff in many departments. I really want to commend them for their compassionate and swift response to thinking about those folks in our community who are most vulnerable, who may be affected by any kind of economic impacts. We're learning from other cities. We have some advantage here of time, so we're watching what's happening in Seattle and learning from their support of small businesses and members of the community. I've seen a number of cities across the state start to ensure that water will be continued to be supplied, and our Public Works Department is working on that. So this just gives our staff that assurance that their policymakers are behind them and with them on those preparations. So thank you for the indulgence of a lot, sharing a lot of information. Again, look forward to the discussion at the closed session as well. Is there any further discussion on this staff direction? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. That carries. So then that concludes our business. We have the order of announcements. Are there any announcements from council members? Seeing none. We've concluded all of our business from the council today. We do have a motion in front of you for a closed session related to the security briefing on emergency response procedures related to the COVID-19 virus, and I'll entertain a motion to adjourn to three, to room 315 for that closed session. We do not take public testimony at our meetings, but I am happy to talk to members of the public who are here after the meeting. Is there any discussion? Oh, I see.
We've discussed this at length with our city attorney and our clerk. I'm happy to respond to these concerns, and I take them very much to heart. We have several upcoming public communications, including a planned press event that I believe the mayor's office is, is leading for later today after the Health Department, the public meeting on Monday, as well as the public meeting on Wednesday. I assure everyone that there is no intention of secrecy here, that this is a timing issue and an issue related to making sure that my colleagues have the support that they need in part as employees of the city of Minneapolis. So I'm happy to defer to the clerk or to the city attorney, but we will also, we always discuss this as the beginning of the closed session, which is open to the public, so you and others are welcome to be there for the beginning of the open session. And I think perhaps that's the best venue to take this up.
Second your motion to close the meeting.
All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed, say no.
Discussion.
Okay. Councilmember Fletcher.
Thank you, President-elect. I just wanted to note that there is a celebration of the Kmart across the hall, and so I wondered if my colleagues might want to call a half-hour recess so that the public that was invited to that event and have the closed session begin at 11:30.
Thank you. That's a great idea. So I will take that suggestion, and we will adjourn our meeting until 11:30 in room 315. That will begin the open public portion of the closed session. And with that, we already voted, we are adjourned. Thank you.